Seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and get this meeting called to order. Doc Matt, Secretary, if you can do a real call please.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Mr. Lane? Uh, Mr. Shelton?
Here.
Mr. Dykes?
Ms. Vichy?
Here.
Mr. Costale?
Here.
And Ms. Sanders?
Here.
Okay, it's time to stand, have the moment of silence and then pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll get on to the public comments, we had two sign up to speak. Uh, when you, when you come up, if you'll just stand at the end of the table, uh, speak to us, tell us who you are and where you live and then, and then tell us what you'd like to say. First they have Sidney Smith.
Um, this is right, okay. Hi, I'm Sidney Smith, um, I live in Indian Mountain. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today. I am here to advocate for the future of our high school drama department and to request your support and steering funding for a new building dedicated to the arts. Our drama department is an essential part of our school community. It provides students with the opportunity to explore creativity, build confidence, and develop skills that will serve them for a lifetime. Whether it's through acting, set design, or backstage work, the students involved in our productions are learning valuable lessons in teamwork, discipline, and communication. These are skills that not only help them in the future careers, but also prepare them to be engaged and compassionate citizens. However, our current facilities are inadequate for the growing needs of this vibrant program. Our students deserve a space that reflects the importance of the arts and education, a dedicated environment where they can fully immerse themselves in the craft of performance, where they can rehearse, build sets, and showcase the work to our community. The exists, the existing annex and multipurpose spaces simply cannot provide this. Investing in a new building for the drama department is an investment in our future. It would foster a deeper appreciation for the arts and provide a space that supports our growth as individuals and as performers. Additionally, it will make the drama department a beacon for future talent, attracting students who are passionate about theater and the arts. We are asking for your support to make this dream a reality. By allocating funds for this new building, you'll be helping to shape the next generation of creators, innovators, and leaders. Our students are eager and ready to take their performances to the next level with the rights based nurture their talents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Adam, I don't think you want to go after that. Is there a time limit? But next, uh, next one up is Mr. Adams.
Hey, um, I'm out, y'all know me from a few months ago, and I'm sure you're tired of hearing from me, but, um, I want to echo everything that she said, and I bring a little bit of a unique perspective over the last month. I've been over there about every three or four days setting stuff up. And I've had to say, um, my oldest son has been in drama and Sidney's really taken to it, they both love it. Each of us, a lot of us have ties to either kids or they got, you got grandkids and your kids are into something, uh, most of the time, they gotta spend some of their time somewhere. That's as, that's as good a place as the basketball court and the baseball field, uh, and the football field. And when you go over there, you realize it is in disrepair. Uh, every time I've went over there, whether it's sprinkled or poured, I've had to pour out buckets of water. Uh, a lot of times I've got Ethan and Colin and people over there helping me. And so, just to give you an idea, we, we, we ended up taking out a couple of those. That's another thing is, I think they're water buckets, it's like this grayish-black liquid. Um, we were calling it sludge buckets by the time we were done with it. When Ethan's coming back in, there's backstage right, there's these two double doors and they latch onto a pillar. He comes in, of course, he starts screaming and we look, the pillar had fell and hit him. And we tried to figure out, we was like, okay, what, we look up, I kid you not, y'all, this pillar is being held by duct tape. That, that, that's where we're at over there with that facility. And the only thing, when I think about it, I think about if you had asked, let's say you had some sort of emergency or whatever, or it was just in this position where you put two or three buckets out there on the basketball court and you told Harper, or you told Hargis, or you, you told Boone, or Rose, hey guys, just play around the buckets, okay? Just play around the buckets. You know, that would be fixed immediately. Because you, you realize that, that number one, it's a safety hazard, two, it looks horrible for the school district to have to do that kind of thing. That is the exact same thing that happened a couple of years ago. When they were, when they were putting a play on, they have to learn their lines, they have to take stage direction, they have to memorize, they have to learn accents, they have to do all these things, and they gotta do it in a minefield. They gotta go out here and get around, literally, they were literally moving around these buckets. They, it just looked shameful to have to do that. My understanding was we were supposed to have a, a, a facility when the new high school was built. It was one of the first things that got scrapped. And that's, they have waited in line for a long time. One of the things that, that you're doing as actors, you're asked to be seen and you're asked to be heard. Y'all start looking and start listening, because they've been in the back of the line for a long time. Thanks.
Item, item number four, corrections and additions to and the approval of the agenda. Um, you may see on the agenda before you, that you don't see the approval of a construction manager that has been taken away. Uh, we have some other things we've got to tackle before we get to that point, if we get to that point, uh, for the golf facility, so that has been taken off the agenda for tonight. Um, other than that, any other corrections or additions that need to be made? All right, and we have an approval of the, approval of the agenda? Do you have a motion?
Like a motion.
We have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving agendas, say aye. Any opposed? Next, the approval of minutes, you guys have for you the minutes from November 14th. Is there anything that needs to be? Or do we have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting? Motion, Mr. Shelton, second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Next, we have Ms. Rita Peters and the presentation for the drama department.
Good afternoon, thank you so much for hearing from me again. I know you'll be tired by the end. It's very hard to follow these people that were speaking ahead of me. So, um, again, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Rita Peters and I live in Indian Mountain. I grew up here, I'm from Stewart County, I went to Stewart County High School and my children went there. I, uh, am here today to advocate for the theater, the construction of a new theater, and request your support in allocating the necessary funds and resources to make this vision a reality. Our theater is more than just a stage, as you've heard from these kids and, and father, I will not go ahead and repeat that. I want to move on to what we have, um, our current theater program. We do two shows a year, they do three or four presentations for each show. Every show is sold out, so whatever the fee is, they, they sell out that theater. They have thirty-five to forty students participate in every production, whether it be onstage, backstage, managing the sound, the lighting, the, the building the sets. They have students there three or four days a week, two to three hours, sometimes more, working on these programs to get them put out there for us. They do an awesome job. With that said, um, we make about, on this last pro, last show, we sold tickets, six dollars a ticket. Six dollars a ticket and we paid five hundred and seventeen dollars for the use of the rights for that program, and that's pretty cheap. Five hundred and seventeen dollars from MIT gave us two nights and twenty-seven scripts. Then we spent fifteen hundred dollars on historical costumes, wigs, makeups, and props. And then we put out some more money for water, because there's no water at that facility over there. They don't have a water fountain, so we have to bring it in for the kids. So, the door fee of six dollars a seat, two hundred and forty-two seats, was about fifteen, fourteen hundred and fifty-two dollars per show that they bring in. So that's a pretty good chunk of money. I think that they, uh, use their money very wisely, but I think that we need to help them. We have that limited backstage area, our students have to, they get dressed, they do their costumes and their makeup in the downstairs theater, then they go outside, around the building in the outside to come in the back of the theater. So if it's raining or bad weather, they have to go outside to get to the stage. I think that creates a hazard, and then we just heard of another hazard today. And then, uh, we need a new curtain for our theater. The one that is there is, is falling apart, they repaired it multiple times. An average cost to replace the theater curtain is anywhere from eight to fifteen thousand dollars. That's a lot, that's going to be, uh, all the hardware, the fire retardant, and the material to cover that stage. The coming, the coming program that they have is going to be, um, the Adams Family. We're going to put that on next. Just the twenty-twenty-three estimate for that program, for that fee, to use that, is about fifteen hundred dollars, just to use the script and the rights for that. So it's a pretty big production, the kids are looking forward to it, but then they're having to work with our limited spaces. So my goal tonight, and what I'm asking for, is for the school board to commit to the process of building a theater. I'm asking you to authorize someone, whether it be an organization, a group, a committee, to look for and find grants, to apply for grants and secure funds for this facility. Now, we all work full-time, we all have a lot of jobs. I have three, and I have been researching grants. I found two, one that closes on Monday. It's a two hundred thousand dollar non-matching grant for a rural facility theater. We won't have time for that one, we don't have the opportunity to put in a construction, uh, a construction plan in that soon. But they opens again in June. I want to have that facility planned and prepared to, to submit that. There's also another rural fund grant that's up to five hundred thousand dollars to, for a community grant to, uh, support the arts, that includes building a rural facility. So, there are lots of monies out there. There's money for, um, there's money for lighting, for sound, for even for the use of, um, I just lost my train of thought here, sorry. There is, uh, for the use of the scripts and the rights. There are grants out there, but we need people looking for this grants. In the matter of the time that I've looked for those, I've found fifteen grants that we could apply for. I don't know all the details, I don't know the ins and outs and the availability and what is needed. I'm not a grant writer, but somebody is, and I'm asking you to help us perform a committee to make that happen and to move forward with building a facility for these kids. It's not going to happen overnight, it's not going to be a short process. I realize it's going to take a lot of work, but I'm willing and these parents and these students are willing. And I think with your support, we can get this done and we can have a facility that not only provides for a theater, you could have a place for your continuing education, for your, for your teachers, to have, um, events so that they can come into a lecture hall and sit down together. You can have retractable seats that open up the floor for school dances and the rebel ends that we were so famous for back in the eighties. Uh, you could do community events that included local musicians. It could be a source of revenue, not only just for the school, or for the school, but not only just for theater, but it could be a, a source of income for the school. There are lots of things that is available to us, we just have to reach out there and grab it. And I'm asking you to support that tonight. I'm asking you to say that yes, we're going to commit to a theater program of building. I'm asking you to say yes, we will put together a committee and we will start researching these grants and start applying for them. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Rita?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, there's.
No questions, I, I forgot that this time you get questions.
How many students did you say are in drama?
Thirty-five to forty participate in every play. That's not including all the ones that actually are part of the drama club.
Does anybody know a rough estimate of how many kids are?
In the club right now?
All together.
All together?
That do all the?
Well, it depends on the play that you are producing. So, you're, you may have twenty-seven in a play plus the other kids in the drama club, so I would say up to fifty.
Okay.
So there, the Creative Placemaker Grant, that is, it closes on Monday, but it's a two hundred thousand dollar non-matching grant for rural communities to build or renovate an art facility.
So Mike, our, our, say basketball, won't say grant. The basketball coach looks up the grant, do we have a grant writer?
We don't have, we don't employ a grant writer.
Did Ms. Lynn used to do some of that for us?
Yes, we used to, but she, when she left, didn't have replaced that.
So in order to get?
Lane did, yes, Ms. Lane did, wrote.
So that's the first thing that we have to get into. Uh, I know a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, people have reached out to me about looking into their own grants as well. So just, just putting that out there.
No, I, I don't mind helping a bit, I, I, but I don't, I have to have access to the information they're requesting. So if you want me to, I'll be glad to do it. If you want me to do it and, and start spearheading people to get this grant written, I just need access to the information they're asking of me, to fill that grant paperwork out.
And then, so you're asking for a, or what the, the group that's for is a completely new building, right?
Correct.
What are we, what are we talking about trying to accomplish with that building?
So, there was a building, there was a theater that was attached to the school in the original plans. I have been unable to come up with those plans yet. I've been to the courthouse, I've been to the school board, I've asked that, we've asked the maintenance people at the high school, we've just not got that information yet. I don't know how many people that theater sat, but we need to seat three to five hundred people.
Darrell, do you remember that? I mean, you had laid your world on.
I do, it was, um, actually it was taken out of the plans, so you probably won't find it. But it was there in the gravel area.
At the end of the gym?
At the end of the gym, that's where it was supposed to be. And it was supposed to be, like, two levels, you know, with the seating.
Right.
You know, and it was, it was removed, it was taken out.
And I believe it was a multi-purpose bit, event.
It was like what you were talking about.
Right, I mean, if you move back, if you have a stadium seating that moves back into the wall, you have this huge area, not only just for the theater, but for community events. If you were to put on a talent show for the kids and charge five bucks to their parents to get in, they fill it every time. The Roxy Theater in Clarksville, um, every year I, they put on two shows, they call it the Theater of Arts. I spend, I pay seventy-five dollars a week to take my child to Clarksville so she can have theater classes. What do they do in theater classes? They talk about how to present themselves on stage, they talk about how to project their voices, how to sing, they do dances, and then they put on a play at the end and they charge anywhere from ten to thirty dollars ahead to get in. So I spent four hundred dollars last summer watching plays and taking her to theater classes, because we don't have anything here. And theater has so many things to offer, my daughter has Down syndrome. She is a cheerleader, she does everything, she loves it. But theater has propelled her into wanting to be a movie star, and in October, she applied for on her own and received the opportunity to be in a commercial for Choice Hotels, and in four hours she made six hundred dollars. So, the things that these kids do, that they learn in this program, puts them out there in the world. It makes them not afraid to speak, it makes them want to be in the public eye and to help their communities. So we're developing our future leaders by allowing them to be public speakers and be up there. We could even have a debate team if we've got a, a nice theater they can go to and practice. You know, Ms. Christina can hold her classrooms in that bill, in that room, in the theater. It's can be an auditorium and bring in guest speakers from all over. Schools do that all the time, and it brings in revenue to the school program too. You could do a summer movie night for our kids to kick them off the street. Every Friday night we play a movie, charge five dollars ahead, our kids are off the street, they're in a place they can meet, and we bring in revenue. There are opportunities, and I will help you with whatever way that I can. I just need the oper, the opportunity for you to say, let's do it.
Thank you.
We have found several sets of plans for the high school, but yet to have found one that has that on it. We just can't find one, yet. I did talk to Neil B., he seems to think there was one there years ago, but we haven't found it yet.
Would the architect have it?
Okay, any other discussion here on, on this, and she's, she's, her spiel there. Um, I believe most of you guys indicated last minute, this is something we, we want to look into, correct? Anybody got any ideas on how you guys want to go forward with this?
If somebody didn't write a grant, I mean, that would be a first step.
Look for a grant writer?
I mean, I'm sure there's.
Yeah, how much would it cost to, I don't know how grant writer works, so this is a question from over here. If we had an employee, is that an extra duty that they could get paid to do, how much would it cost? I mean, I don't know what that looks like, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, different places do it different ways. Sometimes you hire somebody that's just part of their job, you know, like when Lane was with us, when we had Lane and, and Lynn were both working over there together, pre-COVID. They kind of worked on that together, it was just part of their job. There's also ways that you can get somebody and they work on a percentage. So if they get a two hundred thousand dollar grant, you're going to pay them maybe, uh, I don't know the number, you know, maybe ten percent. You know, they work off of, they're an independent contractor. I mean, there are people out there that you can hire agencies that will do that, or if somebody in the community wanted to do it, volunteer, that would be the other way. But as far as somebody needing information, I mean, we're, would, just tell us what you need. If you want to take it and run with it at first, I mean, I'm not sneaking from the board, but we're, we'll give you anything that we're allowed to give you, and it doesn't, um, and, and, uh, I think it'd be a great thing myself.
What about the location, is that still like an available area that could be worked with?
Oh, yeah, you can take some parking, but I mean, we don't use that. Technically, that parking, Mr. Gray, is not used by students, right?
Correct. How big is that spot?
It's big enough for a gym.
You've got a gymnasium.
Yeah, that's what the idea was, the original plans, I wasn't here, but I just remember, I remember my dad talking about it. Slide out, where you could roll down, they had golf, they, you could have goals in. So you could actually, when it wasn't being used as a theater, you could, if you had a team that need, you had two teams needing to practice at the same time, they may use that part. They had that at Fairview High School and a lot of other schools built in the, uh, built around the same time ours was.
Would Dr. Wallace even know where those, those plans may be?
Ms. Rita, did you reach out to Dr. Wallace?
I did, I've not got a call back from him yet.
I think.
And free Dr. Wallace.
Pardon me.
Freed, freed, it was freed, freed, was it, no, what was, freed, um, the architect, can y'all help me? It was Freed, Freeman and?
Hart Freeland.
Hart Freeland, yes, that's it, yes, that's who it was.
Tell me that again, who was it?
Hart Freeland Roberts, Hart Freeland Roberts. That was it, Hart Freeland Roberts, yes. And they're still active, because they have booths at T M L.
But you, you remember it is completely taken out?
I was thinking that they had them to redraw the plans and take it out, if I'm not mistaken. Because, uh, for some reason it was taken out. So I'm thinking the plans were redrawn, and that's why I don't think there, there will be any. But I think, um, I've got their card, actually. Rita, I have their card. Because the guy that was working there, the girl that was with him, uh, she passed away, but he's still with them. So I have their, I have his card, I'll get it to you. I'll get you the, the number.
So what are we trying to accomplish on this question? Well, where we're at right now is the presentation, and, uh, she's, she's challenged us, um, in a great way. There, I don't think there's anybody here that denies we need something for the drama department, uh, but we have to play the process out. So I would make a recommendation to, to you guys, that when we come back in March, that we all have done some kind of research on a theater. Spacing, I mean, because it's a lot bigger than like this golf facility, a little building, this is a big, big thing. So we need to do some research, see about a grant writer, see if we can't light something up, because whatever we do, we're going to have to RFQ it for architectural engineers to build this. So we're going to have to have what we want before we can have somebody do that for us, so. So. That was kind of my question is, what do we want it to look like? Because that drives, and what do we want it to be able to accomplish? Because that drives prices a whole different way. So really, and that comes to a question from Mike and the drama department, and, you know, because a thirty by forty might be this, but a hundred by two hundred is a whole different.
Correct, it depends on the number of seating you want. And so looking at the space available is what will dictate what you can put there, whether it be a single level or a multi-level, and whether you want to include plumbing inside of it and it, how, the access you want from the rest of the school. But yes, it will be a, a large undertaking, and I think that having everybody come together with something they think is functional, then we can move to get, move with those pieces by putting them together, the things that are most important to move forward.
Who's the, I'm sorry, I'm asking one question, who's the drama department leader?
It would be Ms. Christina, Christina Anderson.
I would, and I don't hold anybody else's hand, but I would definitely like to see what is wanted before going into what grants and all that, right? Because we don't know, if we know what we want, then we know what areas to look into to get what we need to accomplish that. So that's kind of what I would ask for.
The best, the best I can recall, whenever we looked at the thing like that back in two thousand or whatever it was like that, at the end of the trophy case in the lobby, and at the opposite end, there was already the doors put in like that to get, to get in both, in both directions.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Darrell, but right after that, Houston County built their high school, and their theater was similar to what we had in mind, but it was not quite as big. So Houston County's theater that they have now was what we had in place, with just a little bit larger. So if that kind of gives you an idea, if you've ever been in Houston County Theater, then, is that not right?
Yes.
Because they, they went ahead with theirs, after, you know, they took ours out of the plan. But, um, it was, it was on the same, uh, the same pretense of the, you know, the, the, the side, a little bit bigger, but it was, it was the same style.
So whenever they, we, whenever the middle school played the basketball game, Montgomery Central earlier this year, even like you had, I went in their theater and it's like that, but their theater didn't have retractable seats. Theirs is, at least it looked like, they was at the ground and they bolted in. But they had a, it was a nice theater.
I'm one hundred percent for it, I just think that we should know how big we want it, what we want inside of it, and, uh, you know, what amenities we're putting inside of it before we seek out to get money. I think that we should do it, I'm talking about grant wise money. I'm not talking about, I think that, I mean, if y'all told me they didn't have this much money right now, I'd be like, yeah, let's do it. But, uh, I think I would love to know exactly what is wanted, um, before we.
I think you could do both of those simultaneously, you could do, you could do that and find someone to write the grant, then, then you would.
Because I'm sure on the grant, you're going to have to put something like that.
You're going to have to put your construction, uh, your construction.
And I think our focus should be the drama, and if we had, and we need to add the basketball goals later, or we need to add anything later, if we can't, if we can't afford it all at one time, the drama is the first focus.
No, I think that, well, I think that advocating, I don't think that, yeah, I don't think.
Oh, I know, I know.
About that, I'm not advocating for it.
Oh, I know, I know.
To me, you have a, I mean, if you're asking professionally what I think for drama and what's best for them, if you're going to have a facility, it needs to be just a theater or an auditorium where we can have assemblies and everything else like that.
I think that a standard auditorium, maybe not a roll-away auditorium.
So our, to clarify, the next meeting is going to be in February?
March.
March. So the next meeting, uh, if everyone would write down things that they think is important, I will put together some images of the local theaters from surrounding counties, and I will see if I can't reach out to find what budget they used with those facilities and bring that back for further discussion. And then in the meantime, I will work on trying to find a community grant writer as well, and we'll work on moving forward on things that we can move forward on. And is there someone that I need to speak to prior to submitting a grant?
Prior, I think you have to, we would have to approve it prior to, right? Is that how that works, prior to submitting for a grant to the school? There's going to be legal things to follow, submitting, I don't know, but accepting for sure.
Right, so there are some small grants that have to do with technology, electronics, such as microphones, lighting, and, uh, scripts and plays that are anywhere from five hundred to five thousand dollars, that could be used in the interim of a facility that we could begin to start writing grants for those. And one, get our feet wet with writing grants without a professional grant writer, and two, in preparation of what we're going to need in the big theater. And two, in preparation of what we're going to need in the big theater.
Whatever you, let's, let's, let's track it through Mr. Gwynn.
Okay.
He, uh, he's the finance person and he already does, he orders the, he, he helps take care of the, um, drama things when they need things.
Right.
He orders the scripts and we pay for those and so.
So I will research and find grants and I will send them to Mr. Gwynn, allow him to review them. If he thinks they're appropriate to apply for, then I'll work on applying and get the paperwork.
It goes to one person?
Right.
And then he's going to bring it to me and we can look at it. And that way, the legality of it, I can then make sure it's all, all kosher with, uh, the legal side. That way, we're not just having like 20 people running around trying to do, do things.
Right.
Because everybody's got plenty of jobs and, but we want to help you with it. Uh, here at the central office, I can get into that.
That's, that's great. All I want is a commitment that we're going to try to move forward and make something happen.
We will help here. The school board, they can, I'm sure that it sounds like that's what we're, we're headed on the same direction.
I would just give a Mr. Steen and use her to what it needs to look like, what you want. Her approval presented to us and then we'll go forward with that.
Yes, sir.
That's, thank you. This is, we all agree, this is much needed.
Thank you, Mr. Gwynn.
Anything else? Okay, on to the next one, item number seven. Um, this is something that, uh, you know, Bobby kind of, I talked to Bobby and he said, man, he, he did some things, kind of tweaked it on his own. And when, when I was chair, I got a bunch of, had to watch a bunch of videos. And I seen this, this, uh, this one school system do this, and I thought we should do it. I thought it'd be great. Especially with, for the morale of, of the staff that we have. We have a great staff at this school system, and I know y'all agree with that. Um, so I want to try to do, what they do is this, they did, each board member at a meeting would recognize employees for something that they've done. Uh, outstanding or just longevity or anything like that. So I want to institute that with our board, and I've asked Ms. Fitchew to be our first guinea pig for the, uh, for the first time. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Fitchew.
Okay. I'm going to stand here so I can face everybody, if that's okay. Um, when Mr. Dacus contacted me and asked me if I would be willing to choose someone, I said, sure, no problem. Until I started looking and naming names and going through schools of teachers. And I was like, oh, what have I got myself into? Because I agree, we have the best group of teachers. And, you know, a couple of years back, I sat in a class and it was talking about how the teacher profession was declining. And a lot of it had to do with, um, potential violence in the schools, negativism, um, but social media of being so negative. Uh, we do hold our teachers to a high standard. I understand that, and they should be, but they're not perfect. And as a parent, as all of you are out here, none of us are perfect. So if I could give everybody here, everybody in the school system, I would, I would call everybody name by name. Whether it be teacher, assistant, uh, board office, um, custodian, bus drivers. I mean, just the whole school system, because I think we have a team. And y'all may think I've been here too long, but I'm on my 30th year, and guess what? I think we've got one of the best team of teachers, uh, employees that I've ever seen. I've never seen so many people work together. And no complaining, the only complaint and I see sometime is a disgruntled parent. And again, teachers are not perfect, but I think these teachers that we have here give their whole heart and soul to, is why. That was so hard for me to pick one that outshined, because everybody shines in their own, in their own title. So I picked two. And so I'm going to start. And the reason I picked two, I'm starting with the beginning of, of a teacher. And, and how the positivity and the energetic role is that goes to a teacher that's been dedicated here for many years. But this young lady is a seventh grade language arts teacher in Stewart County Middle School. She graduated from Murray State University in May of 2023 with a bachelor's degree in middle school education. Her focus was math and English. In December of 2023, she earned her master's degree from WGU in curriculum instruction. She is currently working on her doctorate at South College, majoring in educational leadership. Besides her regular teaching duties at Stewart County Middle School, she has a sponsor Beta Club, FCC LA. And even has taken Beta members on numerous field trips, including state convention at the Opryland Hotel. She has volun, volunteered in many capacities. And she has helped CHS FCC LA by taking the members to the national conference in 2023. She has chaperoned high school FCC LA. She has been instrumental in planning and organizing fundraisers for both Beta Club and FCC LA. She has been involved in many pageants and different things to raise money for these, uh, organizations. And she has a way to celebrate with honor new students. So I think Stewart County Middle School, I think the school system, we are so fortunate to have Michaela Watson as our newest. One of our newest teachers and her positive and all of her energy that she's hit the ground running. So Michaela, I'd like for you to come up. And to be new and have done all of this since 2023, I'm like, really? Come on, y'all. Give her a big hand. And our next person, uh, y'all can be here all night, because I could tell you so much about it. This wonderful lady has taught at Stewart County High School for 40 years, both full-time, now part-time. She has taught family and consumer science all these years. She has sponsored FCC LA and Bears Team. And started our reading team in which the high school students go to our elementary schools to tutor students. Her knowledge, her humility, her dedication, her positivity has spread contagiously. As she has been a true mentor to students, Stewart County High School employees, and also to our community. I've known her for many years, and she sets an example of a heartfelt educator. This is Nancy Myers. Would you come up, please? So that's far from, from Michaela, in between to Nancy, I think you all wrong, okay?
That's a lot of ears between you.
And that's a lot of, that's a lot of teachers and employees in between, and all of you are great. Thank you so much for the opportunity to do this.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa, for that. Just thank you, Michaela and Nancy, for your dedication. Uh, moving on to item number eight, the council agenda, uh, you guys have it there before you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion. Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gillum. Any discussion over this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next one, we have the approval of the 141 amendments in this school.
Um, if it's all right, Mr. Williams, we'll talk about it.
The, uh, there's an additional one. I put a, a, an updated copy of the amendments on your, uh, table before the meeting. There's a third one that wasn't on the, uh, agenda when we sent out the packets, but the, the first two are just, uh, projects, moving money for projects. The first one is, uh, the building construction of the bathrooms and the, uh, the bathrooms at the golf field and the golf facility. Of $200,000 that you guys wanted appropriated for that project. And I also appropriated $45,000 for Chromebooks and a website update. The second one is, uh, coming from fund balance as well. It's the roof at North Stewart. I've allocated 725,000. Hopefully, we won't spend near that, but, uh, I thought it was better to have a little wiggle room. The third one is a, uh, the Head Start Collaboration Grant that we get each year. This is just allocating the $24,000 from the Head Start Program. I go towards, uh, feature stipends for two teachers, teachers at North Stewart. And, uh, Ms. Paragon is going to use the other 20,000 for playground equipment. We have another 141 amendment that is special ed that Ms. Robyn can.
Yeah, the, um, special ed, uh, pre-K grant, um, it's some new allocations that the state, uh, sent down. So I budgeted those. That's the $21,229. And I just budgeted those into that state pre-K grant, but it has to go, it has to stay in the general purpose. So it's not a special ed fund from federal, it's just state.
Do we have a motion to approve the 141 amendments?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? On to the approval of one amendment, 142, questions?
Uh, that's also mine. Um, this is the, uh, special ed, um, money. When we did the original budget back in the spring, we kind of guesstimate how much we're going to have and budget that amount. And my allocations were less than what we had thought they were going to be. So this is just an adjustment to make it match what the state has in our budget.
Do we have a, uh, motion to approve the amendment 142? You understand? Do we have a second?
Second.
So, any discussion? All those in favor, if you have a say in aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to the next one, which is, uh, system letter grade presentation. Turn it over to the director for this.
Um, as most of you know, uh, we received over, uh, right before Christmas break began. Uh, we received from the state our, our, our letter grades that, uh, that started last year. Uh, accountability is, is twofold in, in, uh, in schools in Tennessee. And we have federal accountability, uh, which, uh, takes in, uh, where we get reward schools. And we did, we did really well on that. Uh, we also have state accountability. And, uh, and this is over the state accountability. And, uh, let's go to the next one, Mr. Gwynn. Just an overview, schools are assigned an annual A through F letter grade. And, uh, these grades are based on, uh, on percentages of different things. In K-8 schools, uh, 10% of your grade is for growth. Uh, uh, excuse me, 10% is for growth in the bottom 25%, the kids in most need. Uh, 40% is growth of all students. And then there's 50% of your grade for K-8 is through, uh, achievement. Uh, in high school, it's broke up, it's broken down a little bit different. 50% achievement, uh, college career ready, uh, counts for 10%. Uh, and then growth of your bottom 25% is, is 10%. And then, uh, growth for, for high school is, is 30%. In you, in each category, you're assigned a 1 through 5, uh, score and, uh, to each indicator. All right, we'll go on to the next one. It's Gwynn. We're going to go through each school. Uh, Dover Elementary first. Uh, Dover Elementary received a letter grade of a B, uh, which is what they did last year. I will say this, Dover Elementary was 1/10th of a point from being an A. Uh, Dover Elementary also is a reward school, uh, one of the, uh, which is a very prestigious, uh, honor given out to, to the, uh, to schools across the state. Uh, they, in achievement, they, they scored a four. Uh, in growth, they scored a five, and then they scored a four also for their lowest, uh, 25%. Uh, so Dover Elementary was a B, and we were very happy with that. Uh, like I said, 1/10th of it, we celebrated within the day on being a reward school. And, uh, we feel like that we've already started looking at how we're going to get what we started last summer. Just to be honest with you, uh, how we're going to, uh, move into the next, next range, which is our goal. Mr. Gwynn? Okay, North Stewart Elementary. Last year, North Stewart Elementary received a, a C. This year, North Stewart Elementary received a B, and we're very, very happy with that. Uh, had a success rate of 42 and a half, half percent. Achievement score of four, growth score of three. And for the bottom 25% or growth for the lowest 20, I shouldn't say bottom, the lowest 25% is a three. Uh, and we were very pleased, uh, that they improved last year and they continue to improve. And, uh, I think that, uh, both our principals at our elementary schools, Mr. Saunders and Ms. Page, and their assistant principals. Uh, uh, Ms., Ms. Williams and, uh, Ms. Watson, I mean, excuse me, Ms. Powell. Uh, do a, do an excellent job. And, uh, just to go into the schools, I, I, I'd really encourage our school board members to, to sometime come with me. And just go around and see, I know when Gary came on the board, we, uh, we spent time. And when you go in those buildings, uh, you just see a lot of great things happening. And I, I say this a lot, I get in a grumpy mood, I usually try to go get around some kindergartners because they'll cheer you up real quick. All right, let's go on to the next. Stewart County Middle School. Uh, Stewart County Middle School, uh, also received a B. Last year, they received a C, so we were pleased to see again improvement. Uh, success rate 45%, uh, achievement score of four, growth score of four. Uh, and then in the lowest category, they, a two, which we're already working on that to make that better. Ms., Ms. Crane and, and, uh, Ms. Gillum, uh, and, uh, Ms. Crutcher have already started looking at how we're going to raise that. Uh, the middle school, I will say this, they had the most improvement over all of our schools in one year. And so I, I, I attest that to them looking at it and not feeling sorry for themselves about, because they weren't happy with the grade they got last year. And, uh, they went to work and, and identified what we're doing well, what we're not doing well, and, and going at it. And that's the only way you can, you can do it. All right. Stewart County High School also received a letter grade. Last year, they received a C. Uh, and so the achievement score was a five, uh, growth score was a two. Uh, growth for the lowest 25% was a two, uh, college career ready was a four. Uh, you know, Mr. Gray and I were talking about it. He's, you know, I, I'm excited because moving from a C to a B. It's really difficult to make, make these, uh, make these gains. And, uh, he wasn't happy with a couple of them, and, uh, I know that they're going to, uh, uh, they're already starting and, and identifying our weaknesses and, and going to make them better. Or just some notes that Dr. Duncan left for me. Uh, we were 2/10ths from being a five in college career ready. I think we'll get there this year. Uh, the letter grade was a 3.7. Uh, the statewide median, uh, college career ready is 3.3, and we're above that in all four schools. So we are, I think we're on the right track. Okay, system accountability. Uh, system wide literacy, we were a four. System wide numeracy, we were a five. Area weakness that we're, we're already looking at how we're going to, uh, do that. The science, uh, we are, will be adopting a new science curriculum in the upcoming year. Uh, and I think more emphasis is going to be put on it. For the past five, since I've been director, everything that the state talks to us about is about literacy and math. And science has just kind of been left behind. And we're going to, uh, again, we're going to be getting our curriculum together, and we have great people who are going to do that. System wide social studies was a five. System wide, um, uh, composite was a four. And, uh, we had one reward school. And, uh, they designate in different areas where you are as a school system. Stewart County, uh, the highest is exemplary, uh, where we're not there yet, but we are in the advancing, which is right below exemplary. So we, uh, so we, we feel like that we're going to get there and, uh, and just very, I'm very happy with what we've done. Not completely satisfied, because I tell them, uh, tell our principals all the time that, uh, you know, we got to keep the momentum. Uh, don't be satisfied, we're going to keep working hard. And I think that our, our teachers, our teachers, they work themselves. And if you ever get a chance to talk to them, tell them thank you. Because, uh, and I know firsthand, I live with one, and, uh, I know how much she puts into it and, uh, and our principals too. So just very proud and, uh, I appreciate y'all listening to what I had to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I can get out of the room for that one. Good job. Move on to.
There's one thing I left off. I'm sorry. I skipped over it. I do want to say this, there's 146 school systems in the state of Tennessee. I do want to say this, there's 146 school systems in the state of Tennessee, public school systems. Stewart County, Stewart County School System placed 58th, which is, I'd like to be number one. But I, I think that that is, we're, we're way above the median and I think that we are, our trajectory is on the right track. So I just wanted to add that to you. I skipped over that. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the North Stewart Elementary roof bids. You guys have that before you. All we're doing tonight with this is picking out which bid we want to go with. And then there'll be the process that follows thereafter. Do you, do you want to address this or would you like Jamie to do that?
I, I think Jamie's, Jamie, Jamie went on a cruise during Christmas. He told me he spent a lot of his time laying out in the sun and reading about roofs. This was after we took in our, took in the bids. We asked Jamie to take the bids. We didn't award anything because of this big of a project, I thought that capital project that, that we needed to really think about it. And the school board needed to approve or not approve what, what we were looking at. But Jamie did a lot of research and I think he's got a line on what, what he thinks will be best. And then we have some choices here and I wanted to put it before you. And hopefully we can move on to this project so we can get the roof on before the next school year starts.
Jamie?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I'll try to make this quick. I did, I didn't know I would know this much about roofs when this started, but I did do a lot of research and I've talked to a lot of contractors, a lot of roofing manufacturers and installers to try to make sure we get the right roof for our specific building, for North Stewart, okay? There is two options in your bid summary, either, either the PVC or the rubber roof. You know, we kind of did that just to kind of, just get an idea of different options as far as warranty goes, workability, reliability, things like that. Just so we knew we were getting what was best for that roof. Let me start off, there's, there's no wrong choice. Both of the PVC and the rubber are great roofs. There's not one really better than the other. They're both great, okay? But getting, but talking to everybody, there was, you know, every building is, is different, every roof is different. And talking to them about our specific building, there's a couple of differences that come up that I thought y'all would like to know to make a better informed decision. The first one being the PVC, everybody, not everybody, most of them that I talked to said PVC is mostly used, now, not all the time, but mostly used on restaurants, factories, hospitals, things like that, that have a grease type exhaust on the roof. You know, for like grease vats, things like that, okay? They just thought a PVC roof at North Stewart was a little bit of overkill, okay? Because we don't have that. We don't use grease anymore in the kitchens. We don't have any type of grease exhaust or any type of water exhaust on the roof. So they all thought it was, it was a little overkill, even though it, it would be okay. It was just not necessarily used in, in what we needed it for, okay? The, the second was kind of warranty wise on them. With the PVC, you're going to get a great, you're going to get a 20-year warranty. Edge to edge warranty, what that is, the metal flashing on the side, that will all be replaced. Where the roof meets the edge of the knee wall, they'll put metal flashing on, which it has now, but it, it will be replaced and new. So from there, everything, it has a 20-year warranty for the PVC with a 90 mile an hour wind rating, okay? The rubber roof, the EDPM on there has a 25-year warranty. Same thing, edge to edge metal on, on end, okay? So that's kind of the, the differences in that. The next thing, what most of them talked about was the traffic on the roof. You know, once the new roof gets on, it's not like we're not going to be up there. And we still have units up there, you know, all of our package units up there, the new fresh air units are still, so we're still be up there having to do what we normally do, okay? In which they kind of considered it a medium to a high traffic area, which is not necessarily good for a PVC roof. Not that it, not that they wouldn't recommend it, but the rubber was just more reliable, a little bit more forgiving walking on it, okay? If you're going to be walking on it a lot. And that kind of leads in with the warranty part. Because us, you know, being up there, doing the work, now, it, it does happen, you know, that we, you know, pull a, a panel off of a unit that, you know, the fresh air units, those panels weigh about 60 pounds. And if you let it drop too fast or you drop it on the corner, it's going to put a hole in the roof, okay? And it happens. Or you step on a screw or something, you're going to put that in there, okay? That's not covered under the warranty, okay? The warranty, which y'all probably know, it just covers the roof, the material, the installation, things like that. You know, if a seam comes apart or 15 years down the road, if it starts separating, that's where the warranty kicks in. Everyday wear and tear, I don't know if y'all remember just what, last year, the Osprey flying over the annex dropped a log down on it and it stuck down in the roof of the annex. Things like that's not covered under warranty, okay? So that leaded into the workability part of it, okay? Right now, the rubber roof that's on it, we can repair and fix that stuff in-house as far as the maintenance department. We have all the glue, the, the primer, the cleaner and the rubber, okay? That's where we can work on it ourselves. A PVC roof, you have to have specialized tools. They have to be welded, well, they call it welded, it's like a caulk that they put on it and they take iron and heat it and that's what seals where the leak is, okay? We don't have that. We would have to call somebody out to do that, to repair, you know, a simple, you know, puncture, whatever. So that's kind of where that is now. As a maintenance department, my recommendation is to go just with the rubber roof. You can see the price difference as far as the EDPM to the PVC. You're going to pay a little more upfront, I think, but over the life of the roof, not having to call people in, being able to work on it in-house and repair it in-house, that will just come out in the wash. Now, like I said, you're not going to go wrong with either one. But just for North Stewart's specific roof, that's what I would recommend. Now, y'all probably remember our capital list that we put in a couple of years ago has Dover's roof on there. Now, that roof, I would recommend a PVC roof. So it's not that I'm down in PVC. It just, just for North Stewart's roof though, I think the better option would be to go with the rubber roof.
Any, any discussion?
So we're. The Kennedy Rubber Roof.
Yes.
That's like the.
That's the.
What you recommend.
Yes.
You already put, how much was it that we said we was going to put aside?
Seven.
Seven hundred and fifty-five thousand.
That's what we appropriated for it. And that was just in case there was, you know, things could come up. As we saw when we put the roof on at North Stewart's gym, we had to go back and the drains were clogged and have, remember, we had to replace all that. So we had to increase.
And that kind of factored into it too, that they've, we've already done the gym in the rubber roof. So if you did, if we went with PVC, we're going to have two different style roofs. You know, not that it would matter, but it would be two different style roofs.
So let me say, you have an incident on a rubber roof, on this rubber roof right here. And it has a warranty and you're up there trying to patch or fix what you have done. Does that void the warranty that the company already?
As long as we use what we have, which we've got, we've got it from the roofing companies. So we're just not up there like put super glue. If we do it, just like they say, that does not void any of the warranty. As long as we use the right products, do it the right way, which we have been, we know how to do. We've been doing it for a couple of years now. And as long as we do that, no, it does not void the warranty. As long as we use that, you know, as long as we use the 60 mil EDPM, everything that, you know, they have laid out for us to use.
And that's stated in their contract.
So the bids right here, there's $13,000 difference on them?
Yes.
Is there anything that the cheapest one is doing that the other ones is not doing? Or we'd be an apples to apples?
I mean, they're, they're pretty much, like I said, there's not a wrong choice. Both of them are great. Just, you know, those few items that I picked out just for North Stewart, no, there's not really any difference in either one of them.
I think what you catch back though, is if you do end up keeping that roof for 25 years, all the maintenance that goes into it, if they can do it in-house and not void the 25-year warranty, then you make that money back. If something happens, you make it back a lot faster, in my opinion.
True.
So what do we got to do?
Well, when someone's ready to make a, a motion to accept one of them.
I make a motion to accept the Kennedy Rubber Roof for North Stewart.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Passau to accept the rubber roof from Kennedy bid at $658,194. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Shelton. Any discussion over this?
Where's Kennedy out of?
Where's Kennedy at?
Nashville.
Nashville.
They, they've done some work for us. They did the North Stewart Gym. They've come out and on some of, and really, they've come out and helped us on some other projects too, on leaks and stuff. We're familiar with them, they're reputable company. I mean, they have commercials, I mean, I don't know if you've seen the commercials on TV, they did all kinds of stuff. And these other companies, I will say, they're good companies. I mean, I'll. They're all good companies that, that, that put in bids.
When is the starting project?
In the bid, it says we will start as soon as school lets out.
And how long? I just took your word, sorry.
And in the bid, it would be done at the latest, the week before school starts. But I, you know, I'm pretty sure they would move a lot faster. Regardless of what we, when we, whatever bid we approve, we will then go to the contract phase. And so you guys will be able to see the contract because we'll have to vote to approve that when that time is, is ready for them to get started and move forward with it. So we'll make sure all those things that y'all want to hear are in that contract, just to trust. But very specific, like those two questions need to be in there. And I think he's on top of that.
I don't know if this is in.
I don't know if this is in the contract or not, but if, if they over exceed the date that we're supposed to go start back to school, do we have a fine in there?
We can put that in the contract.
Most definitely.
It was in the.
It's in there.
Yeah, it's already in the bid.
Oh, it's already in there, okay.
I should know better.
Yes.
It's in the bid package and there's a penalty. I'm not so sure, you know, some of that roof at North Stewart doesn't have to, they can just go in and lay down on top of it. That's why we had it broke up into sections. Some of it's not as old as other parts, so they don't have to go in and take everything up. I mean, I, I'm not saying that they will, they may be able to start before school lets out on that part. If they're not having to tear stuff off, they may be able to go ahead. If they have the materials, that's why we got to get this, kind of get the ball rolling on it because they're going, whoever does, it's going to have to get their stuff together and get it all laid out.
Every, every company that bid on it said, you know, of course, we had the start date in there. And every one of them said, you would see weeks before materials start coming in, we would have to designate a spot at North Stewart where they could bring stuff in to leave until that, the first day there, you know, the summer break, that first day, they go ahead and start. Everything's already there and you'll see them. But you'll see it weeks before that, they'll start bringing, you know, construction dumpsters in, things like that. Conexes to keep all the materials in. So they'll be ready first day of school that's out, first day of summer.
Any other discussion? Madam Secretary, do a roll call vote for this, please.
Mr. Dykes?
Yes.
Ms. Fidjou?
Yes.
Mr. Passau?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Shelton?
Yes.
All right, so the bid, Kennedy Rubber Roofing, done. You guys can breathe aside. Fresh air now, you don't even worry about that. All right, next on the agenda is the director's report.
First of all, I know that everybody understands we're not, we are not going to have school tomorrow. I know that I disappointed a lot of kids today. But we will go, we went ahead and canceled based on the. It turned into, when it turned into a weather warning, I, I thought that we needed to go ahead and everybody in the state has. I was watching the news before I left and so that's one thing. I do want to make a statement about something and because I've been asking by, by more than one board member about this. And it has to do with employees and employee discipline. And I, I came up with a statement, I just want to read this to you and hopefully this will answer your questions. And may or may not, but I want, I do want to do this. Stewart County Schools values transparency, accountability and professionalism in all, all aspects of our operations. When personnel matters arise, including those related to discipline, we are committed to handling them in a manner that's consistent with our policies, procedures and applicable laws. We respect the privacy and rights of all individuals involved. Consequently, we do not comment publicly on specific disciplinary actions or personnel matters. Our primary focus remains on maintaining a positive, respectful and productive environment for our employees, our students and our community. And, you know, employees' personnel files are, if requested, can be looked into. So if there are any questions, it's all in the personnel files. You know, those things are left to the directors of schools and administrators in each school. And sometimes we make decisions and, and do things. It may not be what everybody agrees with, but that's, that's, that's how it goes. And we can't go back and, and change things. So I just wanted to make that statement. I hope that answers some of y'all's questions and, and I'll be happy to talk to you about it at any time. And that's all I had, that's all you got.
Okay, next on there is announcements. I do have a few announcements this evening for you guys. One, going forward, when we have our meetings, you will no longer receive a packet in person before, the week before. You'll receive it via the email. So make sure your email's up to date with, with, with Ms. Stacy. But you will have a packet on the day of the meeting at your spot where you sit. That was a great idea to, to cut back on some of the waste and, and overloading Ms. Stacy sometimes. I mean, look at this times nine, that's a lot, that's twice. So it's a lot of paper we're, we're spending. So that's, that's announcement one, number one. The second thing is, last board meeting, we, we voted to approve the compliance report. I do want you guys to let you know that, and no fault to the school system or myself, we did do that on a wrong form. When it was brought to our attention, I called TSBA, talked to them. And they said, you know, mistake happened, just next year, we need to be, we need to make sure we do it the right way. And what happens is even though we were compliant, whatever we're doing to be compliant has to be listed on that form if there was something that was founded or, you know, what our actions were. And it's, it's on the web, education website, we just, we just did the wrong form. So I do want you guys to, to be aware of that. And then the next thing, if you will look going forward, some of you have, have reached out about the policy 1.304, which calls for us to have committees. And those committees include a citizens advisory committee, a staff advisory committee and a student advisory committee. So I want you guys to look over those and at the next meeting, we will go two ways with that. We will discuss whether we want to continue this policy. TSBA did say that this was real big during like COVID year, but a lot of these schools have went away from this. Some still use it. So we need to decide if we want to continue, because right now, we are not compliant with that policy. We don't have these committees as set forth in our policy. So we need to see if we want to continue with it and, or not. And then we need to discuss about who we want to assign to these committees. It says in there that the director sets the timetable for all that, but it's something as a board, we have to decide what we want to do with those policies that, that basically we're just not following right now after due to whatever reason. But look at that, that's 1.304. So, all right, any other announcements from the other board members?
I have a couple of questions. I know when we come back, I know we've talked about how instrumental we are of getting a, a new drama building. But when we come back, is there any way we can look at something in trying to stop some of the leaks or something that we can do? Because these kids are. Because these kids are going on with their plays. Something that could be temporarily, because I think that's, you know, that's not good either, because we know we're not going to have this building anytime soon, but they're going to continue with their drama. So I would like to see something put in place to look and see, because I know you were talking about that, well, I go with the buckets, and I'm just thinking, you know, these kids are going on with their plays, so I would like to see something looked in to temporarily trying to fix, or at least try to prepare, you know, to make it a little bit better than what it is. I'm just suggesting to the board, because it's still, it's still a problem. Even though we're looking at something now, we still have a problem maybe.
Jamie, you think there's ways to mitigate some of it until?
You know, honestly, we've mitigated a lot of it, but as Mr. Craig knows, he's seen firsthand, a lot of the leaks, you know, we fix them, the next time it rains, they go over to another spot, we're just falling on kind of them all around, and that's, that's what we've been doing, just chasing them.
Short of doing a complete roof replacement, which you're, I mean, you got to think about what you want to invest your money in, you know? That would be a complete tear-off and replace. They can't do an overlay on that. We've already had people, I've had two different roofing companies on that, on those roofs.
Well, I think it's a shame that the kids have to go through that now, and it being such a lengthy process of what we're doing, to make them have to, to still have to suffer for it now. I think that's a shame, I really do.
What do you think, Lisa?
I mean, I don't know, I don't have the solution, I'm just asking the question.
We put a roof on, and then have a plan for three years, have a full new thing built, or do you just chase a full new thing built and not, and do what you can? That's really up to-
I just think they have battled this for so long, and now we're looking, we're getting so excited for a new facility, but that's not going to happen, that's not going to take care of what we're doing right now for the dramas, the drama students. And I think it's just, I think it's a real sad thing that they're having to battle that, myself. It's just something I wanted to throw out there. And another thing, have we had any more issues with propane tanks being filled?
No.
Okay.
Those propane tanks, there's a monitor on them, and the, and the propane company is responsible for making sure that the propane is filled.
That's in, is that in our contract?
Yes.
Okay, it's in our contract, okay.
And what was weird about that situation in North Stewart, the other tanks were seventy-five percent full, and one, it was one tank in the gym. And by the end of the day that we discovered that, it was, it was filled up and back on.
Right, okay, okay, because I know I had just gotten some messages about it, so I just want to make sure we weren't having a problem anywhere else.
And he was on top of it.
Okay. But they do have monitors, all of them have monitors, all of our tanks have monitors? They do have, okay. Gages, well, gauges, I call them monitors, but-
Ms. Lisa, Jamie, Jamie called me, too. There's also another safeguard, on those GPS or whatever trackers they are on the tanks, they get an email when they're at thirty percent. That's the same one the company gets to come refill it. He's got it, where now they're going to contact the propane, too, and say, hey, we got the email, making sure you did, you know? So Jamie, Jamie put a safeguard in place that day.
No matter who dropped the ball, it's still, it was without propane, so that's, that's a good idea, thank you. Okay, that's all I have.
Any other announcements?
I don't, no. I just wanted to say, I think that we should look into, if possible, without taking a whole lot away from our staff, recording our own meetings, just my thoughts, putting it online ourselves, that's something for y'all to think about. If we like it, then we can, you know, try and do something about it.
I vote yes for that.
Is there a difference? Well, right now, the people that are putting it online are a third-party, I mean, they can put whatever. If we do it, it's our live video from the school system. Just my opinion. Does anybody have something?
She's going to turn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Sanders, do we have a second? Second, on the favor, say aye? Thank you guys very much.